Roll call the City Council for the meeting on Wednesday, July 17th, 2013, 7:30 PM. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Kunzo is absent tonight.
Never you say that.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, and Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, excuse me, I ask that we remember all of those in our community, both local and global, that are less fortunate than we are. We ask that we remember all those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, including, I know, many families in our community, but in particular, the Lomax family had a loss of a loved one and services were yesterday. Also, let's remember in our thoughts and prayers, Mr. Rand Kunzo's family, just, you know, nothing major, but just a small health concern, so we don't want to neglect that, and we want to remember them in our thoughts and prayers. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of the City of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's mix up the minutes of the July 3rd meeting and bills for payment on 7/19, 26 and August 2nd. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay? Repository sale, Mr. Brennan. Do we have anybody here this evening for a repository sale? Anybody here for a repository sale? Hearing none. Brings us the citizens to be heard.
Yeah.
He did all that.
Good evening, Council. My name's Amy Copper Tor. I live at 913 State Street, apartment 903. I'd like to submit a few things to you first, so that you can follow this better. This is in regards to the buses and concerning the lift as well. And this is also a, here's letters for them from the FTA as well.
You've heard one.
I think I might have given you one extra copy there, Mr. Clem.
Okay.
For myself on that top sheet. I apologize there for being ill prepared.
I guess you could, she's got her too. Okay. She needs, Amy needs one.
Yeah, I accidentally gave you all of the copies instead of the one of them.
Not one?
No, the other one.
And you need both of them?
Thank you, sir. Not everybody on the, not everybody qualifies for the lift, and that's been a basic premise of what Mr. Solinsky, Director of the MTA, has said in response to the buses being removed from State Street. As you see, gentlemen, without coverage, the lift is $22 one-way, $4.40 for a round trip. That's basically four times the amount of the cost of the bus. The bus is $1.10 per fare, 10 cent transfer. If you do qualify for a reduced fare, that gets knocked down to 55 cents and a 5 cent transfer. People want to be affordable, they want to be able to get where they're going efficiently, and I emphasize that word, efficiently. With the lift, you have to wait an hour to an hour and a half versus you can get to the buses, they'll come to you within maybe 10, 15 minutes, given of their schedule. That's a, that's a huge thing, especially if you're disabled, in a wheelchair, that you're sitting there and the thought has, the thought comes, and I have had recovery in a wheelchair for six months due to my right knee, so I can emphasize to the point, I had to be 100% non-weight bearing, so I had to go through some of this on a small scale myself, that you sit there and you feel almost abandoned until the thing comes. And it's, you know, we don't want anybody to, not just in a sense of feeling, but the sense of consumership is not there. If you're having service like that, and in fact, when I contacted the FTA, they were even interested in that, in that infarction to it as well. So now they would like to investigate not only the E, but the lift as well, based on that. I have had some people say to me that, you know, "Well, you could take a taxi." Oh, well, taxis are $3 before you even get in the vehicle. So, you know, I don't think a taxi, and then there's based on mileage, you can get $10 to $20 depending upon where you're going. I don't think that that's an equivalent, I don't think that's a righteous or fair equivalent. The communities that have been affected by this, Richmond Arms, Mid-City Apartments, Tulio Towers, Palace Apartments, Boston Store, and Schmidt Towers, even the ones that, like Schmidt, that are located on French, okay, have to walk two blocks, basically an extra block now out of their way than they had to before, because they only had to walk to State before. Now they have to walk to Peach if they want to go, you know, southbound. And I know a lot of people, especially elderly and disabled, that'd like to go to the library. If they don't catch the trolley, then they're going to, and let me tell you, trolleys have been scarce. Trolleys have not had the same schedule that they've had. It used to be that you could walk out onto State Street, see a trolley at any given time, maybe two or three of them, and now you are lucky if you see one when you're out there. They have, I talked to them yesterday at EMTI, I talked to Landis Irwin. Landis had said to me, "Oh, well, we have the same trolley schedule that we've always had." Well, I beg to differ, and it's not just me, I've talked to other people in the city, they beg to differ as well. I'm just the one that can come down, I have the time, and I have, most importantly, the health, because the majority of people can't come because of their health. And making people walk extra blocks in the summertime, I would beg to diff you, to differ with you, is just as evil as making them wait in the wintertime, when it's 10 degrees outside in our snows. The surrounding issues, well, I've, let me wrap up for a moment, Mr. Winarsky. And the surrounding issues, as you can see there, I would like you to consider delivery trucks to pass a new ordinance, if you can, for finding delivery trucks, especially now since they are being big-time abusers in the middle of State Street. There used to be one to two of them, and between the buses, now there are herds of them, three, four of them, back to back. There's more congestion, I think, that being caused by the delivery trucks than there are by the buses. And in accordance with that, I had talked to Mr. Evans about that. We had said that 20 to 30 minutes was a fair time for them to make their deliveries and be out of there. I would suggest that an ordinance be put in place that after that amount of time, the 30 minutes, that you could charge them $50 to $100 where it hurts, where they value. Evidently, they don't have enough respect for the city on a basic good neighbor level that, you know, they would put it out there and leave it be. So, you know, if we, if we can't get them to trust.
Amy, Amy, to be fair for all the citizens.
I'm sorry, sir.
Your time is up, but I appreciate your efforts in this matter.
One other thing before I go, would you kindly make a motion tonight to vote on a public hearing tonight for the buses and set a date?
That would be a wave of the roll of the ball.
Thank you.
I have some information that I would like each of the distinguished members of City Council to receive.
If you would, sir, please state your name and address.
Right.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Simmelkier. I reside at 926 Wallace Street. I'm coordinator of the Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch Group.
Thank you.
And there's a couple of things I would like to bring to your attention, and then on behalf of our good friend and consultant with the Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch Group, there's a document in that package from Dr. Paris Baker from Gannon, relative to a very important initiative that he is going to be having at the Hammontail Center. He's seeking some financial assistance for one of the most important protective factors that has become a risk factor with the communities that care issue religiosity, so there's information in that. So let me address the second issue, as when I was here on July 3rd, we presented the very first and most important issue. The second is, on September 7th of 2011, a motion was submitted by Mr. Capabianca, who was a member of this council at that time, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, and a resolution unanimously established by the Council of the City of Erie that, at the request of the Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch Group of the City of Erie, the administrator approved the installation of a street light in the vicinity of 517, 529 East 11th Street. You can see the attached journal, 128 of the council chambers. As of Wednesday of this date, unfortunately, we must report that the Erie City Council, that the light has not been installed. I am respectfully requesting your assistance on behalf of the Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch Group in achieving a resolution to this issue. Furthermore, I am asking for the guidance in the removal of tree branches that obstruct, again, the issue that I brought up secondarily the last time I was here, that obstruct the illumination of lights and sidewalks in the Neighborhood Watch Group target area. Of particular concern are the areas, again, Wallace Street between 7th and 8th Street, 10th and 11th Street. Finally, I am asking for the status report of our request dated Wednesday, July 3rd of 2013, to have the stop signs located on 10th and Wallace and 11th and Ash properly installed. We submitted a very clear document of that ordinance and the federal regulation that reinforces that, and we have yet to hear any response, other than what Mr. Witherspoon said in his character at the conclusion of that presentation. Lastly, we would like to extend the national night out. You have a flyer that indicates tonight that our Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch Group, some of you have attended that throughout the year, so we extended that invitation to you as well. So those are the reports that I'm standing on behalf of our Erie Neighborhood Watch Group, and, you know, I realize that there may be some things that you see as priorities, but how clearly can an ignored priority, when it comes to the fact that there was a life that was taken two years ago, and as it was stated by one of your members here, Mr. Witherspoon, do we wait until there's another yet incident? I sit on my porch daily in observation of the speed against the improper installation of the light that presently exists as far as 10th and Wallace, and until this council steps up to the plate and decides to do what is more than reasonable, but is part of your duty, we will be here until this is resolved.
Thank you.
So is there any response to what I have asked at this time? Is that proper, improper, or what?
The only thing we're going to do is make sure the administration gets a copy of this ordinance from, what was it, back in 2011 already, and that'll definitely get handled, as well as we'll, I know, stop signs aren't going to be put up overnight or moved overnight, but it has been put forward, and we'll make, we'll definitely follow up on that for you too.
We're not talking about an overnight situation, we're talking about a two-year lapse.
I know, that's with the street light, I'm talking, I was talking with the stop signs.
Not to be argumentative, but let's be realistic, and let's understand the accountability is extremely important for the safety. And our Neighborhood Watch Group has not come here often to request certain things, and we need a lot of things, but this we stand very firm on. And so as I look each of you in the eye, I assure you that we will not let this issue just go by the wayside.
And I assure you, we will not let it either for you. We'll follow up on this one for you.
The same roar that we're going to be experiencing from Thursday through Sunday, we're roaring about human life.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Could the administration look into the stop sign issue and let me know when we can get it done? Thank you.
Can we make sure they get a copy from, this was from 2011, we never.
Yes.
Okay. Any other citizens be heard?
Hello, Jeff Johnson, 509 Hess Avenue. Still here to talk about DUI program going into the Hammontail Federal Credit Union old building, and still want to voice some of my concerns that I still have about that Their very untransparency of what those students and who those students really will be, and I know it's a small percentage, but it is a percentage of felons that will be in my neighborhood at nine o'clock at night, next to my house, in the dark at winter, and I am very concerned about that. Well, concerned about my security and my privacy, just found out I'm getting five levels of fusion in my back, and I'm going to be on my property for nine months, recouping from that. And, you know, nine o'clock at night, 50 people in that parking lot is just going to be not advantageous to my healing. So I hope you take that in consideration, and I know we looked at the zoning and the regular requirements and everything like that, so I, I feel good that maybe something good will come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I ain't gonna bite you. My name is McDonald, my property is 19th and Reed. I have a lot of issues, they should be yours too. I don't come down here just to look at y'all. I come down here because there are problems existing out there. Look like I'm the only one could see them. Y'all got eyes too. Them foreigners coming over here, I don't blame them for coming. But, what are you doing for our soldiers? That's what I want to know. That's what we should be concerned about, what's being done for them. They come back all shot up, gee whiz. I don't even know why they go. A lot of them went because they couldn't find no jobs. There wouldn't be no cause for me, because I wouldn't have went. I'm just being honest with you, I wouldn't have went. What you going for? You gonna catch hell when you get back here? So stay here and catch hell. Those, those, those peoples coming in here, we got peoples, I don't know, they're hungry, the kids are hungry, but y'all could find money and housing. People's been waiting to get in public housing for years, and they haven't gotten in yet. But you could bring them foreigners over here, and you stack them up in there, give them plenty of money, you go to the store, they got two or three baskets of food. I know it's not coming out of the air, I believe in feeding peoples, but hell, we got peoples over here hungry. Why, why are, you know, somebody's getting their pockets patted, they don't love them people. They, I, I can't see it. Here's somebody going risking their life for you, you don't love them, but here, you go back in the woods, somewhere, invite all of these peoples and bring them in here by the boatloads, and you take good care of them. I don't understand that. I'm seeing here, you want $4 million, $500,000, but you don't explain nothing here. Number this, the number that. The numbers don't mean nothing, you want, you should write out, then explain to the peoples what you're wanting all this money for, what you're going to spend this money for. And I don't think you should spend before you get it, it should, you should spend it as you get it. You ain't doing nothing with it. Look at them four things you're going to put down here on the corners. What, what, what is that for? That was wasted money. Those curves you cut out, that was a waste of money. But you ain't did nothing for those sinners. You got excuses. You keep your excuses. When hell break a loose, then I'm going to see what your excuse is going to be, because eventually, it will happen. I was watching that little play they had down there in Florida, they broke that boy loose free. That don't make sense. But I tell you what, God got the last say-so. How can somebody shoot somebody and just get away free? I ain't never seen a judge like that, they had down there, and then they had six women, and not a black face on that. Those were not peoples of his peer. It was a joke. It was a joke. But the joke is not as funny as you may think it was. You watch and see. You just watch and see. That's a shame. They're just, that's supposed to be justice. If that's justice, it's worse now than it was back in the 60s, and hell was being raised back then. Ever since Martin Luther died, I don't know, things look like they're backing up. Things should have been getting better, but a few of them good old boys get patted on the back and right is just, wrong is just the right as it could get. A trillion wrongs don't make one right. Had that been one of y'all's that died, you wouldn't be, you'd be feeling mighty sad. I hear people, "Well, they did the right thing." I don't see nothing right about it. And I tell you what, time will tell. Time will tell what was right. That thing was pre-cut before they even went to trial, because it took long enough. It took too long. I, you know, when I said something like that was going to happen to myself, I never said it to nobody, but God will be the judge in the end, I promise you that. The Bible teaches about that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
My name is Willie McAdory, I stay at 448 East 15th Street. Take it back on what Mr. McDonald said about that Florida incident. We are sorry in Erie. We are sorry in Erie. There's nothing been said about the boy Trayvon, and everybody know that that man murdered that boy, but that, you know, I already, I knew he was going to get off, because, you know, white peoples got their revenge, OJ. OJ got away, now he got away, so now they said we even. But that's not on anything else. We had a girl over there, over here in the county, that was brought in by the police, no charges, made no charges, lock her up, tasered three or four times, take her to Hammontail Hospital, she died. No charges, why was she in jail? What was she in there for? And then when they requested, who was the officer that tasered? The city said, "We can't give you them names." You're going to kill somebody and you can't tell me who did it? And it happened in the police station? What is going on? Something terrible wrong here. And we got other major problems in the city now. With all the problems that we have with them guns and all these other things that's going on out there, and people starving half to death, now you got one of the most dangerous drugs in the world on the street out there now. We just had a young man die an overdose. But I want to tell y'all now, it's going to be a lot more. But the sad part about it, you know what I'm saying, it ain't going to be black folks just dying either. Might be some of y'all's kids. Then I wonder what we going to do about it then? What we going to say? And another thing, you know, what happened with that job situation for this month, for the kids? What happened with that? I ain't heard nothing else about that. You know, next month, going to be August, and they go back to school next month. Nothing been done. There's nothing been done for the peoples out there in that community, and I don't understand why. Why everybody taking a deaf ear to that? Nobody looking at that, matter of fact, you don't even talk about it. What has, what has our mayor been in the city, been in his office, what, eight years? Getting ready to go for 12? He ain't been in the black community yet in eight years, with all the problems we got out there. He don't represent, he don't represent all the citizens of Erie? What's up with that? Ain't none of my peoples out there seen this man. You know, to relate a problem that they're having out there, and these are city problems, he don't even respond. He ain't responded to nothing. But everybody's supposed to be law-abiding citizens out there and adhere to everything, but then ain't nothing being done for them. How do you expect that? We tell them to, you know, "Be cool, don't do this," or "Don't do that," but he's starving. What is he supposed to do? It don't make sense. I don't understand. I really don't. You know, like, what, 20, 30, 40 years ago, it was much better in Erie then than it is now. Things that was going on then, ain't none of them happening no more. And we playing the game with the peoples trying to get jobs. First time brother go down there now, the community know, half the peoples out there in that community, they don't have nothing else to do, so they smoke weed. They smoke weed, they go get a job. They can't get no job, first thing they do is take the urine, and it's dirty, and I understand that. They're not going to hire people with a dirty urine, and I understand that. And I'm not asking for no special privileges for them, because they understand what they have to do, they know what their responsibility is, and I understand that too. But it's bad. It's real bad. Then over there across the street, they ain't, they ain't happy. Everything is incarceration, I ain't seen nothing as an alternative to going to the penitentiary. There's no programs out there that, you know, some of these peoples can get in, that they don't have to go to the penitentiary. Everything is jail over there. There's no rehabilitation for none of these peoples out here to go to, you know, they make a mistake, then when they, when young boys make mistakes, 15, 16 years old, they done for life in America. Now what kind of sense do that make? They catch a felon, there ain't nothing they can do with a felony for the rest of their life in America, and you penalize an individual like that for life? That's a mandatory sentence on him, a death sentence. And if he having a felony, he can't get no job? And I understand, that's what the law is. So you don't condemn this individual for life of doing nothing but crime. Another thing y'all talk about is $36,000 a year to house one inmate. Biggest lie ever been told, don't cost the citizens of dying. Prisoners in jail make everything he wear, they grow everything they eat, they got free lectures and, and, and heat.
Mr. McAdory, I.
Did the bell ring?
Yes.
I didn't hear it.
It's red.
It's red now, it's a red bell.
It's red now.
And a.
We have colors now.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council President. Council, my name is Randy Barnes, 109 Lockpoint. Welcome, mayors, staff, administration guests. I am here to speak on Agenda Item F. I share some of the same concerns as the property owner of 509 Hess does regarding this change in usage. I do commend the landowner, the landlord, for trying to repurpose this building from a credit union to something. It has sat empty for quite some time. I would ask, it's been explained to me that there is something in the code that requires a barrier fence between this type of building and the immediate adjacent property. The current fence is a chain link fence, and it's 48 inches tall. There's a current fence there, it's 48 inches tall, and I would ask the Council, if they do consider this change. And, uh, I would ask the council, if they do consider this change and pass this change, that they would require an eight-foot fence between this current property and the immediate residence to the north of that. And, and the reason for that is, uh, at five classes a week, Monday through Friday, plus two on Saturday, uh, 25 students plus the five possibly staff and instructors, works out to about 210 people will enter and exit that property every week. And most likely, they'll be turning north off East Lake Road, which at night, after four o'clock in the afternoon in our wintertime, headlights will be shining directly onto this property at 509 Hess as private residence. So I think if you do pass this, it would only be appropriate to request one condition, that would be an eight-foot fence. That would give the property owner, whether it be Mr. Johnson, whoever owns that property next, some additional privacy of having those headlights shine directly on that house. And, and of course, that's how zoning is in the city, and years and years have gone by, but, uh, actually, Mr. Johnson's electric meter, the glass part of the electric meter is the same, 48 inches from the current fence. So if you stand against the current fence and reach out, you're within one foot of touching the electric meter on this private residence. So that's why, again, if you do, uh, pass this, uh, agenda item F, that I would request consideration for an eight-foot fence to protect the private owner. Private, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of city council and, uh, Mr. President. My name is Father Jerry Priscaro, 921 East Avenue. I'm here first of all to announce that the next public meeting regarding the McBride viaduct transportation study will be held Wednesday, July 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Blasco Library Auditorium. That's Wednesday, July 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Blasco Library Auditorium. There will be a public meeting regarding the McBride viaduct transportation study. It's important that everyone who has been impacted by the closure of the McBride viaduct attend this meeting. Let your voice be heard. The study is supposed to conclude soon, and so it's important that people speak up, and they speak up now. While there's a lot going on in regards to a study of the McBride viaduct, Mill Creek and Fairview Townships are actually planning to build a brand-new viaduct where there's never been a viaduct before on Mill Fair Road. It's one mile from the Erie Airport, one mile west, $12.5 million, 80% federal, 15% state. No citizen advisory committee for that project, no citizen advisory committee meetings for that project, no public involved in debating. When's the last time you were invited to a public meeting regarding that project? Just like that, it's been approved. 80% federal, 15% state transportation funds, and again, $12.5 million. The city of Erie is really messing up and missing out. Although economic impact viability and development was identified by the citizen advisory committee members of the McBride viaduct CAC Committee at meeting number one, there's absolutely nothing contained in the purpose and need statement regarding the 11 vacant commercial properties and storefronts on East Avenue and the six vacant abandoned commercial properties adjacent to the McBride viaduct on the north and south sides. Let's not forget about the five vacant commercial properties on Buffalo Road. East Avenue has 17 vacant commercial properties from East 7th Street to the McBride viaduct. Guess who has suffered most from the economic impact of the closed viaduct? A new intersection at Buffalo Road and the Bayfront Connector Highway will do absolutely nothing for the Lower East Side. I'm surprised the Buffalo Road intersection is even still an option. There's lost sales tax, lost property tax, lost corporate tax, lost personal, local, state, and federal income taxes because of those vacant commercial properties from East 7th to the north side of the McBride viaduct. That's lost sales and profits to Erie's economy. That's lost small businesses and small business owners and entrepreneurs. That's lost jobs. What has the city of Erie done for the Lower East Side? As we celebrate Perry 200, I have no doubt in my mind that the good Commodore who said, "Don't give up the ship," would also say, "Don't give up the bridge." Why? Because it's un-American. It's not characteristic of a city that wants to grow, to abandon bridges and demolish them forever. We're called to build bridges, not destroy the bridge connections we've had all these years. Wherever I go, people continue to ask me, "What's going on with the McBride viaduct? When are they gonna fix that bridge? Or when are they gonna build a new one?" We need that bridge on the east side of Erie. Thank you, members of city council.
Thank you, Father. Any other citizens be heard tonight? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
Okay, we have ordinances for final passage. Council file ordinance 15,841, an ordinance repealing official file ordinance number 109 1991, Article 343, cable communication systems of the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, and further authorizing the proper city officials by resolution to enter into a cable franchise agreement between the city of Erie and Erie Telecommunications Incorporated, doing business as Time Warner Cable. Motion to Mr. Mersky, second by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance bill number 15,841, and now known as official file ordinance number 20, 2013, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Ordinance is adopted, A6, A0. Council file ordinance 15,842, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $4,500 from the Erie County Department of Health for the Erie County Safe Roots to School Initiative and providing for the expenditure thereof for repair, maintenance, and supplies. Motion, Mr. Winarsky, second by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance bill number 15,842, now known as official file ordinance 21, 2013, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Council file ordinance 15,843 for first reading. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $22.69 from unappropriated anticipated revenue, providing for the expenditure thereof in the 2010 Justice Assistance Grant for consumable items for the Bureau of Police. Uh, motion, uh, Mr. Witherspoon, second by Mr. Winarsky, council file ordinance number 15,843, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading of city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Council file ordinance 15,844, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part 1, Administrative Code Title VII, Employment Provisions, Pensions, Article 147, Police Employees Pension Plan by amending Section 14701, 14705 by adding definitions relating to disability, self-connected disability, surviving spouse, traumatic event, and amending survivor, and amending the provisions regarding disability retirement in order to clarify the requirements for such benefits. Motion, Mr. Evans, second by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance 15,844, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading of city council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Mr. President, I move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second. Is there any separation?
Should be noted that, uh, under old business, the waterfront conditional use, it has been added to provide at least a six-foot-high privacy fence between the property and the neighbor immediately to the north. Mr. Brennan, on the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. We have a couple of waive rules this evening. First is by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Mersky, that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing on Wednesday, August 21st, 2013, at 8:00 PM in the city council chambers relative to the bus route changes that recently took effect by the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority that rerouted buses from State at 10th Street to Peach and French Streets. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, this is to waive the rules. Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky, voting on the resolution. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Uh, next, waive rules resolution by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, authorizing the proper officials of the city administration to release the $7,000 approved by city council as a transfer on May 15th, 2013, for the youth summer job project from account 4041, City Council Professional Services, to general government. Voting to waive the rules, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mr. Mersky votes no. And Mr. Witherspoon and Mr. Winarsky. Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just for the way of comment, excuse me, um, we had this initial discussion a couple of months ago on trying to, um, utilize, uh, city funds that we traditionally in our city council budget kind of roll over into the next year. And, uh, what better place in our, in my thought process than most of us, is to invest them into our young people in our community, to leverage them to hopefully, uh, acquire matching funds, utilize it as seed money to be able to put some of our young people to work, uh, during the summer. It was a great idea, oh, I think it was a great idea, a little biased, I guess. Um, but I think the, the heart of the, the initiative was good. I think it was very, it's been very challenging because the idea came to my mind late in the year. And so, you know, I was very appreciative of getting the initial vote, um, majority vote to, to transfer the funds. Been doing a lot of legwork since then, and I have a meeting with a group that is going to, um, take care of the balance of this, the budget that's needed outside, beyond our $7,000. Uh, they asked to kind of remain nameless until we officially do it. But my idea was, you know, I want to put 25 kids, 30 kids to work this summer, like that's what I really wanted to do, um, with the help of this group and other community organizations. Just again, with the lateness of the year, that magnitude of program and project didn't work. And so it downscaled in size, um, and utilized it as a, a prototype this year of being able to put 10 young people to work, um, for the last seven weeks, six and a half, seven weeks of the summer. It's been amazing, because I've been meeting with these young people, we've interviewed, I've done it, it's group and individual interviews with them, they filled out applications. I was telling someone earlier this evening that a couple of them had never filled out a job application, so they gave me a job application folded in four quadrants and said, "Here you go." I said, "Hey, thanks, appreciate that." Got all the kids in the room, and I said, "If you would have given this to me outside of this project, I'd have thrown it in the garbage. But since we're here to learn, I'm gonna give you another application. Here's how you fill it out properly. These are the things you do to protect it." And they brought it back, and they did that. So they learned something. Uh, partnered with multiple organizations in the city, excuse me, three in particular are, were host, working as host sites or work sites for, uh, these 10, uh, young people. The Parade Street Community Center on 8th and Parade, where there's a lot of youth activities and projects going on there, as well as, uh, free community lunch program that these young people are working at. And they're learning about, not just making a check, but learning about service and responsibility. The Martin Luther King Center is another work site and location where young people are learning, uh, responsibility of work, as well as, uh, the Booker T. Washington Center. So those are three organizations that were available right now to do something at such late a date. And I appreciate them for, for that. Uh, again, this was, this process was not ideal. Uh, I would like to continue to do this, working with this council and other organizations over the next coming years, um, but starting on it now. Not waiting till, you know, again, the idea came late, so there's a late process where it's kind of, you know, wasn't ideal. But, uh, I see the fruit of it being, uh, great. And, and this is, again, the $7,000 is a seed. I think these 10 young people are a seed that are gonna grow into something, uh, very fruitful in our community. And so, uh, all the votes, uh, that I've, that will come to this, uh, waive the rules as well as to this resolution, I appreciate, uh, the yay votes, and I may even understand the no votes, if there are any. Because again, this was, wasn't ideal. But with that said, I think the good far outweighs the bad. And, um, just want to take a little extra time in, as the initiator of this concept, to just kind of say where things are, what's happening, where they, where things have, the things that have been done. And, um, and my vote is yes.
Mr. Mersky?
Um, I'd like to explain my vote before I vote. Let me be clear that I'm not against young people obtaining work. Let me make that abundantly clear. What I'm concerned with is, we got this in May, and we didn't hear anything about it, and then today at 2:00, we got an email saying it was gonna be on the agenda. I believe that if we hire people with city taxpayer money, it should go through the city HR office. That did not happen with this. Um, I believe that if we're going to invite youth to have jobs in this city, it should be put in the paper, open to everyone in the city, not just handpicked individuals. That did not happen. I have many students at East High that in June or May, April, were asking me for jobs. I didn't have the opportunity to make this available to them. Um, I think if it's a good idea, we should put it in the city budget. And so we wait the year and put it in the budget. Um, we have work in the city that needs to be done through our public works department and our parks department. I, I'm concerned about sending kids out to, uh, nonprofit organizations on taxpayer dollars. Uh, I think that we should have them work at our parks department. We have many parks that haven't been edged in years because we don't have the manpower. And, uh, finally, I just feel like we do three things at the city level. These are our core competencies, public works, public safety, and general administration of government. And I think if, as long as we stay within our boundaries of those three things, then I'm for it. This, I think, falls outside of that. I think that what we should be doing is working with the mayor's office and working with the community to, uh, have the private sector develop jobs, not, uh, dole out jobs with taxpayer money. So my vote's no.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I, uh, support the project 110%. I've worked very closely with the United Way, who have identified a large percentage of minorities in, that are impoverished, the children. And this is one of the areas that we can make a little indentation. The process may have came a little late, but better late than never. In the training sessions that I have attended, many of them, they all talk about working and dealing outside the box. This project is outside the box. It's the first time. It was a spontaneous thought, but it was a good thought. And I agree with Mr. Mersky on some of his, uh, concerns. We will deal with those concerns next year. The selection of the children, and I know none of them at this point, were made by Councilman Jones, individual kids who some are living in impoverished situations. I said previously, and I repeat, we have approved millions of dollars to contractors outside the city. Therefore, we are not putting people and businesses- Therefore, we are not putting people and businesses to work in the city, millions of dollars, and that's okay. We get the best bid, sometimes the lowest, sometimes it's not the lowest, but we get the best job to be done for the bucks we give out. And seven grand, based on all the money we give out to all organizations, profit, nonprofit, you name it, we, seven grand is no money. For me individually, yes. For Mr. McAdory individually, yes. We don't walk around with seven grand in our pocket. But we have to work with our kids, regardless who they are. I work with 250 of them every day, five days a week. Five days a week. Y'all gotta come up to the basketball court and see what we doing. Haven't had any issues, no problems yet, because they are appreciative of what we are giving them. And these kids will be very appreciative on what Mr. Jones have put together. Next year, we will implement, and we will suggest to Mr. Jones, that we have a process that may appear to be a little fair. Maybe each council person can select two individuals based on the number of dollars we have. Booker T., JFK, Martin Luther King Center, their budget's been cut drastically, so they could need, they need the help too. Depending on the age of these young people, they cannot work in many of the city departments by law, depending on what they can do. They can't handle no machinery if they 14, 15, 16. They gonna clean up, they gonna be sweepers. I think the community centers will give them something they can hang their hat on. So we have a lot of work to do on this project, and we'll start very shortly, soon as it's over with. We're providing some school money to buy school clothes for some of these kids that don't have it. That's what it's about. It's about kids, and I think every one of us care about young folks. Mr. Mersky, he's with them during school year every day. He sees the pros and the cons. So I, you know, I agree with him on many of his concerns, but I cannot say no to the kids this year. We'll do a better job in selecting, we'll create a process, and we'll go from there. We'll make it happen. Think it's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I vote yes.
Mr. Winarsky? Motion is adopted, yays, six, nays, yays, five, nays, one. Okay, committee reports. Mr. President?
Mr. Mersky? Just one thing to report, I was at a meeting today with Councilman Brennan, Councilman Evans, and Councilwoman Jessica Randcunto for land banking. I'll let my other council people speak on it, I know they're, it's a really neat process to help redevelopment in the city. It's a new law in the state of Pennsylvania, and hopefully look forward to working with the Redevelopment Authority and the county to begin to explore the options that are available with land banking to remove blight from our neighborhoods. And then, other than that, I just, we have a Convention Center Authority meeting tomorrow, so I'll have more to report next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Yes, a couple of things. I have no liaison report today for the, for my committees, just a couple of things. I also attended the event, as Mr. Mersky was saying, about the Redevelopment Authority and the land banking. Again, very interesting, and we definitely need to do something for our blighted properties, but I'm gonna be meeting Kim Green of Redevelopment Authority, and also to have a continued discussion on that subject. Couple other things, I attended a Destinationery meeting, it was a lecture by Robert Shiblet at Jefferson Educational Center, and the reason I'm bringing this up is Buffalo has a, he described during his lecture, Buffalo has a plan similar to Destinationery called One Region Forward. They're about 15 years ahead of our planning, and they've definitely had, done a lot, but he kind of gave the crowd a lot, you know, there's a large Q&amp;A session, but a lot of meaningful tips on what we should be looking forward, how to improve the plan, and really they're, with their plan being so far ahead, they are solving problems, and they're focusing their funding to really make things happen. A couple other updates, I attended a meeting with the Erie Engineers, or the Engineering Department on the McCollum Park. The city received a Greenways grant to help with the park development, and the city's gonna be putting a road and a parking lot to, for the future park, and there was a master plan done, as I'd reported earlier, in 2010, and biking, or I'm sorry, walking trails and a dog park are part of that, and I volunteered to help out with the dog park development for this neighborhood. And I think these improvements will be great for the park, great for the neighborhood, and I think good for our city, and it's really surprising that the city hasn't had a dog park before, because other cities comparable in size do have dog parks. And last thing, I just want to do one note about the GAF Bayfront Place Development. As has been reported in the newspaper, their work continues at the site, they're installing the seawall, and also some site drainage work. I haven't heard any updates on actual discussions with developers or any updates on the master plan, but development does continue, and I've been in contact with the Convention Center Authority to continue communicating with them on this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I attended the Housing Authority Annual Picnic at Waldemere last Friday. Boy, what a fun event that was. They had about 1,700 people at the picnic, 1,700 people. And contrary to Mr. McDonald's comments earlier this evening, not everybody that lives in Housing Authority properties is an immigrant. There are a lot of people from the United States who live in those properties as well, and I had a chance to meet them, neatest people, and they're little kids. It's so fascinating to see a four- or five-year-old kid that's never been to an amusement park before. They have a gleam in their eyes and a smile on their face you just can't forget. It was really a neat event, and they raised the money to do it. They don't take government money to do this picnic, they raised the money to do it, and what a neat thing it is for the folks who live in their facilities. As David and Bob said, we had a really interesting session today on the land bank proposal. I actually attended both the two-hour session earlier in the day with the multiplicity of officials from the county, and then the later event for just city and county officials. And it was really an interesting presentation. I've sat on the Blighted Property Review Committee for the last year, and I've thought to myself, there has to be a better way for us to deal with urban blight. We're not catching it early enough in the system. By the time we get to blighted properties, they're not salvageable. The only thing we can do is take them by eminent domain and destroy them, demolish them, and then we just have pockets of vacant properties around the city, most of which aren't saleable. The Redevelopment Authority has over 185 properties in the city in its inventory, and most of them, they couldn't sell for $500, despite the fact that they've invested anywhere from $3,000 or $4,000 to as much as $20,000 in each property to obtain it, clear the title, demolish it, et cetera. There's gotta be a better way, and Lord help us, the legislature actually passed a law, and the governor signed it earlier this year, which potentially is a better way, and I was really proud to see Jessica and Bob and David and I there today. It was a good session, and I think it'll be an interesting concept for us to follow up on, so I was pretty excited about that. Third, boy, if anybody thinks that there aren't things to do in Erie these days, they really have to have their head in the sand. In the last week, I went to the Greek Festival, the Arts Festival, Eight Grade Tuesdays, and now we have Roar on the Shore coming up this weekend. Roar on the Shore alone is estimated to bring $100 million to our community, $100 million. It's an incredible event, sponsored by the Manufacturers Association, and I just think, boy, there are so many things going on in Erie these days, that if you're bored, please get off the couch and get out in the community, because there are so many things to do. It's such a neat time to be in Erie. So enjoy the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have eight items I want to go over. You want to hear them again?
First seven don't count.
Okay. No reports, sir.
There we go. Thank you. Just a few comments, following up with Mr. Evans. I know with the Roar on the Shore coming into town this weekend, even though it can be a little bit of inconvenience, especially tomorrow night with the parade of bikes from Prescott Downs to down here in Perry Square, as well as motorcycles throughout the city all weekend, very velvet point, it does raise up to $100 million for this community, and not just the city of Erie, for the Erie County, and like I said, even though it can be an inconvenience to some, it is an asset to others, and we welcome them. McBride viaduct meeting, I know Father was here tonight, I thank him for coming tonight. Finally, after two years, they're supposed to give us their analysis and recommendation on what to do with that bridge. Two years and three-quarters of a million-dollar study, can't figure that one out yet, but hopefully one of their recommendations will be to restore or replace it. I'm all for restoring or replacing that bridge. It is an asset to the city and definitely need it. Our Community Blood Bank, I don't know if you've read the papers or heard the news, they're in dire need of blood, whether it be the heat, the weather, just the season, but if you're healthy enough, able enough, please give blood. Other than that, enjoy your next few weeks of summer, and see you in a couple weeks. Ms. Beck?
I promise to be brief, as always. Just wanted to thank the Perry 200 and the sponsors for the fireworks celebrations that were enjoyed throughout the county. It's been a couple of weeks, but we did have a beautiful display. I know it was congested in the downtown area, but I think all in all, people certainly appreciate the efforts of Perry 200 and the sponsors. Also wanted to remind everybody of National Night Out coming up on Tuesday, August 6. The United Way of Erie County issues a number of mini grants to neighborhood watch groups. It's a great time for the people to get out, meet your neighbor, enjoy a hot dog, or just meet and greet, and get out and know who your neighbors are. The mayor will be as many as he can on that Tuesday. Also, I attended the informational session on land banking this afternoon. Sounds like a great tool that could be used to, my understanding is to take possession of the properties before they turn to blight, so to rehab them before they're in dire straits. Last but not least, I would be remiss without saying, Roar on the Shore is in fact here. Can't thank the Manufacturers Association and the sponsors enough for their efforts in bringing this excellent economic driver to the downtown and to all of Northwestern Pennsylvania. I think you'd be hard pressed to find a hotel room anywhere. Keep in mind that all of the funds from this event go to the Boys and Girls Club of Erie, which is a great organization, and your friends, your neighbors, your colleagues, and many visitors are in town. They're out there, they're on two wheels, look twice, save a life.
Thank you. Why am I thinking we can go home? Okay. City Council now adjourned at 8:40 p.m. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon.